Okay, all right. Okay, there we go.
He's got to sign in.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the Sturbridge zoning board of appeals meeting of Wednesday, May 15th, 2024. I'll have the board introduce themselves first.
Tom Welch.
Dallas Songboeke.
Mary Ann Thorp.
Diane Trapasso.
Liz Banks.
Josh Cole.
Okay, and the agenda is as follows. We'll have the approval of the minutes of March 20th, 2024. At 6:35, we have a public hearing, a special permit at 97 Shore Road for Jane and Timothy Seitz. 6:45 a determination, 24 Cedar Lake Drive for Nicholas Cantara. And 6:55 a determination at 20 Goodridge Road for Timothy and Mary Hotpants. And then we have town planner update, old and new business. I'll take, everybody have a chance to look at the minutes? Do I have a motion? Are there any corrections or anything? Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of March 20th, 2024?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from March 20th, 2024.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
One abstention.
One abstention, okay. Well, two abstentions.
Wait, March, what was the date?
March 20th.
Oh, I was not here.
So, we have one, two, we have one, two, three, four yeses and two abstentions.
Thank you.
Okay. We still have a few more minutes, so let's see, we can, any new or old business? All right, I just want to, we have changed the June meeting to, instead of the 19th, to June 26th, because June 19th is actually a holiday. So, Janey, do we have anything yet?
Nothing yet. We've had some people asking questions about filing, but no one has actually filed yet.
Okay, okay, so everybody is good for June 26th?
Yeah, I will not book any trainings.
Okay. All right.
Also, the annual town meeting.
Yes, annual town meeting is June?
June 6th, June 3rd.
3rd.
Yes, 3rd, sorry.
And it's at Tiantasqua, and it starts at 7:00 PM.
What day, I'm sorry?
Monday, June 3rd.
Thank you.
We do have some zoning articles on that warrant.
Okay. So, that's, that's that. Anybody else have anything else? We have two minutes to go. Really? Oh, yeah, two minutes, two minutes. Lenny, you're presenting, right, Lenny? You can get ready if you want. Just have one more minute. Okay, we're good? Okay, Fidelis, want to read the legal notice? Thank you.
In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 15th, 2024, at 6:35 PM, at the Center Office Building located at 301 Main Street, Sturbridge, MA, 01566, and/or by virtual means, if circumstances warrant, in accordance with applicable law on the application of Jane and Timothy Seitz. Right, okay. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Article 18, Section 300 hyphen 18.2, parentheses 2, and a finding pursuant to Article 15, Section 300, 15.2A of the zoning bylaw to allow raise and rebuild of an existing single-family home on the property owned by Jane and Timothy Seitz, located at 97 Shore Road, in accordance with the plans and applications submitted. As proposed, the site setbacks will be reduced from 3.5 feet and 7.7 feet to 8.5 feet and 11.2 feet, where 15 feet is required, and the lot coverage will increase from 20.96% to 24.02%, where 15% is required. No other nonconformities will be intensified as a result of the proposed request. The proposed request can be viewed at HTTPS hyphen colon, colon, ah, sorry, colon hyphen hyphen, sorry, slash slash WWW.Sturbridge.gov/ zones appeals, slash pages, slash recent hyphen filings, or arrangements can be made to view the application packet by contacting the Sturbridge Planning Department at 508-347-2508, or by email at jaylacy@sturbridge.gov. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this proposal should appeal, sorry, should appear at the time and place designated. Members of the public may watch the meeting online via the Towns On Demand video broadcast or via cable television on Channel 191. It is intent to have this public hearing in person. However, if circumstances warrant, the board may choose to hold this hearing via virtual or hybrid in-person or virtual means. In the event of a virtual or hybrid meeting, notice and a link shall be posted on the ZVA website. Please note that the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast, unless otherwise required by law. Diane Trapasso, Chair, Sturbridge Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Fidelis. Okay, Mr. Jabel, would you like to present? And then we can, from there.
Good evening, Helena Jelbert from Jelbert Engineering. I'm here to present the house located at 97 South Shore Road. The property has gone before the Conservation Commission in Sturbridge, and they have approved the plan as shown before you, with the deck, which is on the upper level, which is enclosed. And even though with the increase in the fact that the deck was installed and closed, created more of a coverage on the lot, what we did is we located new drip strips on the side of the house, on both the north and south sides, plus the fact that we eliminated a patio that was out in the front of the property, and we also added two fruit trees on the property with vegetation next to the lake itself along the stairwell, and then they approved it. Now, along with that, what we did is we took the existing well on the property, was not working properly, so they're putting in a new artesian well and abandoning the existing well for, for usage of a new artesian well on the property. The house is serviced with town sewer, which is located in the front of the house, immediately adjacent to South Shore Road. That is moved slightly to the, to the north, which is getting out of the paved area for the driveway, and there'll be a new, the E1 pump, which will be used, which will connect to the house and connect to the existing sewer line. The property itself is, notice, did you notice that it's got 21 feet of covered, square foot coverage, and it's going to 24? What it actually is, is we added the 24, which is actually taking a 23-foot by 8-foot patio on the second story to accommodate the building, and we added that square footage into the existing building, so the, the building coverage actually on, on the land itself is holding at 20.96, but because of the patio up above that's enclosed, the, the living space would actually go up to the 24%, which is, is there, but still, it's not, it's not impacting the land itself, and because of it, the Conservation Commission approved it. The, the house itself will be raised, and then in its place will be a new building that's going to be built on the existing foundation, which is 26 by 38. The lower level, the, will be, try, walk into the cellar basement floor, which will be on grade. Now, right, right now, it's a two or three-foot foundation with, with no basement, but this one here is going to go in with a full basement, and then the, the second story on the top of the house. If you look in your packets, we've got the building floor plans and elevation shown within your packets, which is in the back, back of the page itself. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer anything.
Okay. Okay, staff really had no major problems with this application, so if the board has questions, Josh, do you want to go first? Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Liz?
Yes. I don't understand, if you're putting the house on the exact footprint of the old house, how does it get up to 24% lot coverage from the 20.9?
Yes, I explained it.
Yeah, and I, I don't understand.
We put, okay, let me go over here and show you.
Yeah.
What we, what we did here is we got actually, the building, okay, actually, the building, the building, it's, the building itself is actually this area, which goes from, from, from here to here. What we're doing in, in the back is we're taking, boy, it's hard, let me go over here. We're taking this area here and putting in a deck up above here, which is eight foot for another story, and enclosing that to go on the upper, upper level. This here staying underneath, there will be crushed stone here. Nothing's going to change with the drainage. What we added for drainage on it, we put drip strips on both sides of the house, we eliminated the paved patio that was in the front, and we also cut back on the driveway. So, the drainage is staying as is, and the coverage, the coverage for the original house footprint is staying as is, but just to show you the, the additional section on the upper level, this is just an overhang.
So.
Go ahead.
It's an enclosed porch that's causing it to? But you got rid of a stair, two, it looks like you got rid of a couple stairways.
What do you mean?
The one in the back?
Yeah.
Well, the patio, the one on, there's none on the side anymore.
No, no, that's it, gone.
And you added this one.
We, we got rid of this right here and replaced it in the front with that one right there, okay? That's the dish, the difference of that. The house actually, the 26 by 38, the same thing, it's staying exactly as shown. Nothing's changed.
Is it the same shed or are going to be a different shed? Because on here, it looks smaller. Or is it just because of the stuff around the outside?
Hey, Lenny. Can you, what looks small?
The shed looks smaller. Is it a different shed, or is it just because of the drip strip that, on the plan?
I think it's just because of the drip strip on the sides, it's, it's the same size. It's still, it's still 26 by 38.
Okay.
The drip strips on each side are actually for, for the roof drain, for drainage.
I don't have any more questions.
That's it? Okay. You read?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. I'm just a little confused on the quit claim deed. If you go to the second page, Commonwealth of Mass. is crossed out and hand written in the state of Connecticut, so I'm just curious, is that, is that okay for us to do?
What are you, what are you talking about now?
Behind the quit claim deed, there's two pages, right? And if you turn that page, there is a page that's notarized back in 2014. It looks like it's a form from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but somebody crossed that out and wrote state of Connecticut.
Oh, I see.
That's crossed out, it says Hartford County, so I'm just asking if, if that's okay.
That's because it was a Connecticut notary.
It's just, what actually took place is the, the individual who witnessed the signing of the transfers from Connecticut.
Okay.
Okay, so they would, they would be notarizing relative to the property from Connecticut, but the property is located in Worcester County, Massachusetts. It doesn't, doesn't change the, the, of where the property is.
Okay, I, I get it. I, I guess, I guess you can. I think as a notary, though, I, and again, this is, you just explained it, but I would initial that, I'm a notary, so that usually is initial, but I understand.
Okay.
I understand. Thank you.
And it's from 2013?
14.
14. There's two different dates.
Yeah, you're right.
No, 13, no, the commission expires in 14.
Yes.
Yeah, that's her. It was done on the 13th.
It was done in 13.
No, but this is the day it was signed.
Right, right. That was my only question, thank you. Are you, are you good?
Yeah.
Fidelis, questions?
Well, not to overflog the question, the prior question, but I'm still trying to understand the math from 20 to 20.4, why we have the same footprint, so I didn't, I didn't quite. And so, the, the porch, wasn't the porch factored into the calculations of the original structure?
If the porch was on the ground itself, okay, it would be an integral part of the occupation of the land, but what it is, it's a cantilever up above, okay? And it's supported by columns on it, and it, and it's, underneath it is, is crushed stone, which is all drained, which hasn't changed the impact for drainage. But the thing is, as far as, as far as the, the area going in, up above it, the habitable area on the thing goes to 24 feet, 24% versus 21%.
Okay, so the additional?
Right, even though, but it's cantilever, it's not on the ground.
Okay, all right, got it. I have no questions.
No questions, okay. Is there any questions or concerns from the audience? Anybody? Are we ready to close the public hearing? Would I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Do we have any online?
Nothing online?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
We're closing the public hearing.
Of closing the public hearing, yes, okay. All right, now, we need, I need, we need a motion to, to the find, find that it's okay to grant, so do I have a motion to find?
Yeah.
Okay, Fidelis?
All right, so the finding?
The finding, yes.
Yes, so, to find that the proposal by the applicant Jane and Timothy Seitz?
Sights.
Sights.
Sights, okay.
Pursuant to Article 15, Section 300 hyphen 15.2A of the zoning bylaw, to expand, change or alter pre-existing nonconforming use, the structure on the property located at 97 Shore Road will not be more detrimental to the move of it.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I just, I just have like one question. I don't think it's altering, I, I, isn't this pursuant to Article, Section 300, 15.2A is to raise and rebuild?
Yeah, sorry, to raise and rebuild.
Yeah, okay, okay, we're just gonna modify that, so, okay. All right, a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion to find is granted, so now I need a motion to grant?
Okay.
A special permit?
All right, so motion to grant the special permit requested pursuant to Article 18, Section 300 hyphen 18.2, parentheses 2 of the zoning bylaw, to raise and rebuild existing single-family homes as shown on the proposed site plan prepared by, prepared for Jane and Timothy Seitz, located at 97 Shore Road, Sturbridge, MA, prepared by Jelbert Engineering, Inc., civil engineers and surveyors, 54 Main Street, Sturbridge, MA, with a plan dated 4/25/23, drawing number 22063, revision 2, revision date, hold on, let me see, did I get that right, the plan date?
Yep.
Okay, it's revision number 2?
Revision 2 with the revision date?
3/20/24.
24, okay. No other nonconformities will be inten, no other nonconformities will be intensified as a result of the proposed alterations.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second that.
Okay, all in favor of granting the special permit? All right.
Very good, thank you for your time.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck, thank you. Okay, next we have a determination for 24 Cedar Lake Drive, Nicholas Cantara. You're requesting to convert the, the existing deck into a two-story addition, right? All right, it's all yours.
Good evening, my name is Nicholas Cantara. I reside at 24 Cedar Lake Drive. I'm here with my wife, Annie, this evening, and I'm here to present you a hopeful and proposed project that we have going on, on our home. Currently, we have what you see as the existing plot of 20 by 20, 22 by 24, with the existing six-foot by 16-foot deck, including the stairs off the rear of the property. So, the proposed plans that have been drawn show a new construction of two floors over the existing footprint of the deck. So, all I'm requesting is to keep the footprint of the existing layout of the, of the property of the home, but demolish the existing deck and build the addition over the existing footprint of the rear deck.
There are no major concerns from the staff? Have you gone to conservation, um, do they?
We met briefly, Erin and Conservation, I briefly met. There's certainly going to be a need for a notice of intent document, but I already contacted a wetlands consultant who has seen the plans, and under his degree, he understands that because we're not breaking the footprint of the dwelling, that there should be no major need for reconstruction of the wetlands or anything.
Questions from the board, Tom?
Was this a total, like, where, you said it's, it's a replacement of the deck area?
The addition carries the existing deck, yes.
Okay, carries the existing deck, okay.
So, the deck is just a walkout from a rear sliding door, it's a six-foot wide by, with the stairs, it shows 15, I think 15.6 or 15, I have it somewhere, 15.11? Yep. With the stairs, I think it puts it a little past 16 feet, but the addition would carry the, where the existing deck is, and it would be six feet out by 16 feet wi, uh, long, wide, sorry. And that would be two stories carrying over. Just quickly discussing with the engineers and with Conservation and with the framer, it looks like we're going to be utilizing techno posts for the foundation support, so we won't be creating any frost walls, sub-basements, connections into the existing full basement. What we'll be doing is initiating three structurally rated techno posts that are basically drilled into the ground for supports of the dwell, of, for the addition, along with the floor. into the ground for supports of the dwell, for the addition, along with the floor joists and the gable ties above.
Perfect. Thank you.
One question. The existing deck, is that ground level or on the second story?
No, ground level.
Ground level, okay.
It walks out from the, so it's right there.
Oh, got it, okay.
Josh, any, any more?
No, that's it.
Liz?
No, I don't have any questions.
Delos? Mary Ann?
No.
Okay. I have no questions. So, um, that's it? Do I have a motion?
All right. So, motion is to grant a determination for the applicant Nicholas Cantara to convert the existing deck into two-story addition. The proposal does not increase the existing nonconformities of the property and you may apply for a building permit for the described activities as shown in the submitted architectural plans titled "Cantara Addition and Renovation," dated May 3, 2024.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of granting the determination? Okay. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the board. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have a determination for 20 Goodridge Road for Timothy and Mary Hartpence to screen and cover the existing porch.
Excellent. I appreciate it. Have a great evening.
Hi, I'm Tim. This is my wife, Mary.
Hi.
Thanks for having us in today.
Okay. Um, I guess you can just explain what you're...
Yeah, we're taking our current deck and screening porch over it. Yes, the current deck. So the railing, you know, the railings are going to go and we're going to frame it up with a screening porch along those lines.
Following the roof line of the, the house before, the deck before, you can see the existing, we're going to come off that.
Yeah, we're going to go a little bit lower on the roof line, step it out that way. Of course, we're going to follow the footprint of the deck.
Yeah, we don't plan to disturb anything except for to extend the roof and put some screens up.
Okay. Um, okay, staff had no major concerns with this project, so questions from the board? Tom?
No.
Delos?
I just added curiosity. So how exactly the roof, is it going to be flush with the existing roof?
See, see where the white trim is? We'll be probably coming down below that maybe about a foot.
Okay.
So that we don't have to do roof work to tie in the new roof.
Yeah. Okay, so it's going to be the same pitch?
Yes.
Okay. No, no other question?
Mary Ann?
No.
Liz?
I, so it's the deck with the, the non-square deck that you're doing?
Yeah, it has a little cutoff over, yeah.
Okay.
Little angle.
That was my only question.
Josh?
No questions?
No? Okay. Um, motion? Hey.
Let's do it.
All right. So the motion is to grant the determination for the applicant Timothy and Mary Hartpence to screen and cover the existing porch. The proposal does not increase the existing or create any new nonconformities of the property and the owner may apply for a building permit for the described activities as shown on the submitted architectural samples, because we don't have any plans. So it's the samples you showed us.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor of granting the determination? All right. Good luck and enjoy it. Right?
I have a question for you. I have a lot next to my house and I believe it's owned by the state.
Yeah, it's a, it's South Massachusetts Department of Wild, what?
Maybe this is not the forum, but I have a, there's a pine tree, a dead pine tree on it. I was wondering how I go about notifying the state.
Tree warden.
Tree warden.
Gotcha.
That does it. Thank you.
Good luck, enjoy it though.
Thank you. We're looking forward to that.
Hey.
Thank you.
All right.
You're welcome.
I have a question. Who is the building inspector?
Um, Nelson. No.
Right now, we have an interim. And we will be, it's out for, to be hired right now.
You are Sarah?
I'm Janaye.
She's Janaye.
I'm in planning.
She's in planning. She helped us.
I will email you tomorrow with your determination.
Okay, thank you.
And with the tree warden's name and contact information.
Do we have anything else we want?
Yes.
Yeah, he lives across the street.
Okay. Thank you. If we're all done, a motion to adjourn? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All righty, all in favor? All right. Good job, guys.